Good evening everybody and a special good evening to our members of the public who have joined us this evening. It's nice to see you all here. Just get yourself comfortable. Just so everybody's aware, obviously we do record all of our meetings now, both visual and sound, and they will be available for public viewing from next week. It'll just take a few days to get that onto the system, just so that you're aware of that when you're speaking it. Okay, so welcome to Meeting Event Town Council. It's Wednesday the 15th, daybreak, it is 7pm. And we will begin with the agenda. Apologies, we have three apologies this evening, all for work or prior commitment. We have Adam, do you want to do that? Can we have a proposal for Adam, please? And seconded, Joyce, sorry, was it you?
Well, I had one time.
Joyce, as long as we had two, that's fine, we've got them written down. All those in favour, that? Okay, let's read all this. And our second one is for Vince, I've already seen the fire engine go out tonight, so I assume he's busy. Joyce and Stan, all of those in favour? Okay, David, are you, did you?
Yes.
Sorry, I missed your hand going up there. And Alan, getting work commitments. Come over there, propose for me, please, seconded by Alf. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, so declarations of interest, members are asked to declare if required. Any discosable, can you rephrase, all of that word, interests? They may have in respect of items on the agenda and any interest they have in respect of items on the agenda.
Oakham and Bloom.
Yeah, okay. Are you staying in the room for the last discussion? You'll go ahead then. So that moves on to item three, which is the minutes. As everybody had points to read, we'll leave that just and consider whether there is any issues they wish to raise in regard to them.
Alex, you've got a proposal, so I'm going to show it.
All those in favour? Lovely, thank you very much. Let's read those. Councillors' Questions, item four, any declarations of councillors' questions? No, okay. Number five, the chairman's report. Things are pretty quiet, I haven't written anything because basically the only events I've been to in the last since last meeting was, was of course, only a couple of weeks ago, was the installation of the new High Sheriff, who seems a very jolly chap, I have to say, he got. He was quite amusing in his inaugural speech, so I'm sure he'll be a real asset to the town. Joyce is laughing, do you know?
I don't know any chairman, did he give you a song or not?
No, he did a song, no, he talked about wearing tights in his High Sheriff's outfit, which was quite amusing. But it was a very pleasant event and it was nice to attend for Miles's final event, because he's been a real good support and he's over this year and he's attended everything that I've been to, so it's been, it was nice to be there for them. Clerk's Report, it's just, I think everybody's got, it's not cases on there.
Just five foot corner, the contractors now start the grass cutting fortnightly. Little picking twice a week and the gate hasn't moved at all. And insurance, excuse me, Quitters Avenue, it's now applied. Insurance company have been informed and the premium has increased.
The premium is up for review and is contracted until 2016, so just additional, because the property is now emptying later, I'm sure we'll make that. Okay, so that brings us to item seven, Deputations by the Public. So members of the public are invited to address in accordance with outstanding procedures. I know Mr Brooks wishes to make a declaration, same here, Mr Beech, you wish to also? Okay, so, would you like to go first?
I'd like to go first.
Would you like to go first?
I'll be the polite one.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr Brooks, I understand you've got four items.
Yes, I'm going to be very brief.
Which to speak on, okay, that's, okay.
Okay, the first one is item number eight, and that's the request by the ice cream seller, who, I was wondering, as I've been told that the council is going to, as a new council, review charges, because they start from £5 for a coffee van for a day, up to various fees of £100 to £150, whether it's circus or fair. That this could perhaps be deferred to the next council. My view is, and views of traders, that he is getting an unfair rate. So that's all I wanted to say, I've said things about it before. The other one is the grant application from Oakham and Bloom. It's been before the council before, it was withdrawn because a councillor actually applied for it, which breached the law, and your financial regulations are surrounding that. The law also says that no organisation can apply for a grant which a councillor or its family is connected to. So it surprises me that the application is back before the council tonight, but you said that you have a way of getting around that, so we'll see how you do that this evening. But the biggest sticking point is, which you may agree with, is that your rules only recently were changed, and you requested match funding. Now, I'm not a maths expert, but the amount of money exceeds 50% that they're asking for, so maybe members would bear that in mind when considering the item. But I will finish by saying that I'm not against Oakham and Bloom on that. The volunteers do a brilliant job, perhaps they've got too much. You know, it's people who are not actually doing the work who are deciding new projects, rather embarrassingly at the moment, and if anybody goes and sees the battle of, I can't get the right word, the memorial flags, it's a shambles, it's full of weeds, it hasn't been touched for a long time. So, you know, maybe they've got too many projects. So that's just something I want to ask.
Comments?
Can I just take a breath? Can I try and rush, sorry? I didn't want to say too much about the disorderly conduct, because I've raised that with the police professional standards regarding a councillor's report, which says that the police inspector named in that report has agreed the policy. It's not a police matter to agree any council policy. I wonder if her name has been used in vain to sway members' opinion, rather than it saying the council solicitor has approved and agreed. But the police shouldn't be involved in town council matters. They're not lawmakers, they're there to uphold and enforce the law. Thank you. And the other one was on, sorry, I've included them both together. The Statement of Accounts, basically it's the fact that the Statement of Accounts seem to have a lot of headings which are going over budget. I don't normally pay much attention to it, as I'm not a councillor, but a member of the public raised an issue with me about wages rumoured going over. Well, the sum on there is about £500 gone over budget. But the one that did jump out of the page at me was office equipment, which seems to have gone quite high. It's way over £1,000, and I just wondered what that was and what the council were going to do to bring all these overspends into line, so that we're not seen as going over budget. Because to me, I know you call it a flex budget, but I never understand the meaning of that. To me, a budget normally with a council, if you stick to it, then, if I can just take another breath quickly, now I've finished on this.
That's right, minutes, that's four minutes.
Okay, just, I think it's just Rob's is drawing to an end.
Yeah, I'll try to be very quick, but, and to the point. One of the things on the schedule of payments is just my curiosity, Apollo Health Solutions, £192. I wondered if you would like to tell the public what that was for. And then, it is my question plus members of the public's question, and it doesn't have to go into personal things, but I'm sure the council is aware that there is disquiet about the continuation of the clerk's salary.
That's not, that's not.
No, no, I'm asking how, it's on this item here. I know you don't want to talk about it, but the question is basically, how long are the public going to have to pay this?
It's not for public discussion, so.
Well, why are you asking, why are you giving us these if we can't question it? I'm asking for people like Mrs Clifton, you know who Mrs Clifton is? She's curious.
You're asking for confidential information, which is not for the public.
No, I'm asking how long are you going to pay it? That is not confidential, it's not, it's public money.
Maybe.
And I'm not going to argue, because we want to do things properly, but I think you must know that the public are very unhappy.
Okay, thank you very much, your comments are noted. Okay, Mr Beech.
Perhaps the staffing committee is the appropriate place, I don't know.
Okay, do you like to take your?
Thank you, my honourable chairman. Members of the council, I'm going to stand here and I'm going to support item number 13. The reason I'm here is because I'm a firm believer that anything that disrupts meetings costs money. It's council money, it's our money that we put into the coffers, so that you can spend wisely. I am convinced that we all have the same experience where meetings can be disrupted. You need to have something in place in order to enforce it. And I think that this document that you've put together actually does it admirably, and provided, of course, that it is adhered to, and it is, it's one that is acted upon. I do not believe there is any reason why the police shouldn't be involved. There are laws in this land and they apply to everybody, including on private property or council property. So I see no reason at all why it should not be enforced by the police. I do have one caveat, however, and that is to do with section 10b, I think it's section 2, which is the, sorry, section 9, risk assessment, b. I've just mentioned about saving money, making sure that there is no expenditure that is unnecessary. And I don't know whether the council is actually going down the route of employing people to be either sat in the wings or sat inside to enforce this. I see no point if you've got the police who have agreed why we should be paying for someone to be a bouncer. That's my view. Now, I'm going to sit and wait for the conversation, the meeting to progress, because I'd be interested to hear what the outcome of that is. But ostensibly, I'm in full support of it, and I think the sooner it is put into, the better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Takes us to item, just item eight, isn't it? Okay, that takes us to item eight, which is a request used at Coots Close by the ice cream seller. This is obviously somebody who applied to us last year and did pay to be part, to be on, to have sort of exclusive ice cream, it's actually on the park. The member of the public is right, we are considering, obviously, now charges for using the park. So you may need to, you may wish to consider that as to whether you want to wait until those charging levels have been considered before discussion. However, I'm more than happy to continue with the discussions this evening and get everybody's views on that, on that point. I think there does need to be some clear guidance around costs for people using the park, so that when they apply to the clerks, they can instantly say, well, if you're doing that, it's going to cost you less. You know, if it's a charity, it's this, if it's for commercial use, it's this. If you're using our electricity or plugging in our electricity, obviously there's an additional cost. So I leave that for discussion. What are people's thoughts on that, please?
Can I ask what the charges were last year?
Yes, last year it was, for 10 weeks, it was £225, so it was £25 per week.
£22.
For, yeah, per session, per week.
£225 for 10 sessions, okay, £22.50.
The coffee van did pay less, it did come here for discussion. There was partly the reason around her payment level was there was an aim that it would be an educational, there would be a different theme each week, that we'd be through school parties and encourage at a sort of fairly low rate to buy things. Not saying that is absolutely how it should be this year, which is the reason why we chose to charge the coffee van differently last year. Comments? Or would you prefer to wait until we've got a schedule of costs to be able to give them a clear steer? Start.
I think it would be sensible, Chair, to ensure we've actually calculated it up and then make the decision. I feel that it would be appropriate to do it at this present time, I really do.
I'm trying to agree with Rob's proposal.
I just want to say, comment, do a comment on this. It is far better to have an ice cream van on a Saturday in Coots Close than in Parkinson's, in Chertley, as we used to. So perhaps a safety issue might be a thing that we could also agree on. And this is on Saturdays, this doesn't include bank concerts, does it? We have an ice cream van on?
Saturdays only.
Oh!
Every year, every Saturday from mid-April to October.
But Sundays, there is another ice cream van, isn't there?
It's the same person, I think it's the same person, isn't it?
No, I don't, but I agree with Stan that we should defer this.
I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction over other ice cream vans that are parked in the street.
Oh, absolutely not.
That's bound by our control.
Just an observation about safety there.
Yeah, there is an ice cream van that comes every day to the park, and you park on Chertley, where the surroundings are.
Yes, we know that, we know that. I agree with Stan, was that a proposition?
So, Stan, would you like to propose that we defer the decision until we've got a schedule of costs to share with people? Sorry, did you?
The problem with that is, it's certainly going to be into May, isn't it? He's requesting from mid-April.
That's true, actually.
So why not put an interim charge on until we can get, well, say, £25 a day? £25 for Saturday, until we can review the charges.
April, May, the whole of May, perhaps.
Yeah, whenever we, whenever we.
That's Bankor, includes Bankor National.
Yeah, because we're going to be, we're going to have to bank on it before we get, before this comes on to the agenda for discussion. Properly, isn't it? And I was sorry, I hadn't thought about that really. Who wants to sell it from April? So, and it would be unfair to say, because we don't know what we're going to charge it yet, that would be a bit unfair. But I suppose if you want to suggest that maybe for the month of April and May, we give them a charge of £25 for the two months, and we'll discuss it. But it's difficult, because you don't know what you're going to agree afterwards.
I don't think you should specify that, just say, yes, we agree to it. The initial charge would be £25, but it would be subject to review by the next council.
Yes.
How logical is that?
That's something with logic. So is that a counter-proposition?
Well, it's, basically, we are proposing that we defer the decision around the total cost, however, as an interim measure. No?
No, we don't.
But we're not telling him the whole charge of the year.
To somebody's ice creams on Coots Close, the initial charge will be £25, but it will be subject to review by the next council.
Initial charge of £25 for what, though? Is that for, for that one day?
No, per Saturday.
Per Saturday, okay. Okay, so the current charging is for £25 per Saturday, however, this is, will be on the agenda for review in May. Yeah? So subject to review in May.
So Chair, I need to withdraw my proposal, so I withdraw that proposal in favour.
Thank you, accepted. Okay, so seconded for, so that's Rob's proposal, seconded by Alf. All those in favour? Okay, so that's your numbers for that. Okay, then we come to a grant application, I believe you're going to exit the room with a decision. Okay, so this is a grant application by Oakham and Bloom. The grant applied for is £1,000. The total project is, part of the Oakham and Bloom project is £1,500. The costs are itemised on the breakdown, so you can see where the £1,500 is in there. And it's about the area just outside the new garage, isn't it, over by the Marks and Spencer's? It's that corner there that's up for Oakham and Bloom's green fingers. Any comments?
Do you have a copy of the regulations relevant to this, about match funding?
I've got a copy of mine. I saw what's on there, actually says match funding. So would you like me to read out the other lines? You've read them? Or would you like me to read them out?
Yes, yes. You're not wrong with it.
Yeah, I mean, there's not, there's not messes, actually. No one organisation will receive more than £1,000. OTC under text to publish the amount available in grants, obviously for this year it's £8,000 total. Prior to will be given to applicants that benefit residents of the parish of Oakham. Grants are not awarded as general contributions to running costs. Applications must have a specific purpose. OTC reserves the right to ask a representative from the organisation to address the council and answer any questions should you require that. Grants will not be awarded to organisations that themselves offer grants. The copy of receipts of all expenditure grant monies will be requested by Oakham Town Council. Grants will not be awarded to individuals. Applicants may be asked to return to the council to brief them on use of the grant money awarded. And there is no deadline for the applications, and OTC will consider these throughout the year. If you remember previously, all grants had to be in at the beginning of the year, we allocated for £8,000, whereas we agreed to spread it out. Once it's gone, it's gone, basically. Is there anything about match funding?
No, I didn't think.
I can apply, that's right.
Can I apologize, but it was very confusing at that meeting that you did it.
Okay, Stan.
You've taken it out.
A question, really, which I didn't answer to. When you read that out, you said that the parish of Oakham, is that the parish of Oakham?
It is the parish, yes, because Oakham Town Council is really the parish council. Project within our town. Oh, sorry, does that, that bed, that flower bed? Yes, it does, sorry. Yes, it does sit there.
Yeah, a rather dramatic, very important point, though. The funding for the next financial year. I know it starts at the beginning of April, and so I suppose we technically have some leeway to make some decisions about it during April. But that, the allocation for the grants was for the financial year, most of which will be decided by the new council object. So I've just got some slight ease about making a decision now about the money that's budgeted for the next financial year in terms of the grants.
In terms of the council members?
Yeah.
I understand your concern there, but I don't think the council can waver, it's got to make its decisions as it goes along. And we can't say, well, we're going to wait till the next council comes in for the majority of the decisions we have to make. We're in a position now where we have a decision to make, and I think we make it. The new council have to accept that decision.
My view on that is, because we have agreed to do it as an ongoing thing rather than as a block, that, you know, we're not considering the full £8,000 here for everybody who want that, it's a graduated process. Joyce, sorry.
I just want to point out that it is a bit more difficult for Oakham and Bloom, because they need to get started now to get the plants in for the summer. So, you know, there is a time constraint on this, and I do think that we should make a decision tonight, whatever the decision might be.
I can accept all those points.
Okay, thank you.
You've got five minutes, mate.
So we've got plenty in the pot, if you like. It's whether people are happy with the decision.
Okay, you know what's been said, and having looked at the figures, I would propose that we go ahead and award this amount of money.
Okay, so that's, all in consideration, we agreed to award the person a grant.
Turn and refuse it.
He's gone now.
Sorry, Dave. Sorry, Dave.
But the council did decide to do that, so we've contacted them. Willow Crescent Park, Willow Crescent? Um, obviously, you know, we've done a refurbishment on Willow Crescent. And I think it does look substantially better than it has done for many years. It's quite smart, it's quite attractive for the children to go and play on. So that is finished now. Um, what I would like to do really is we need to get on and get a sign up to say that, you know, there was no signage, is there, that says it's been renovated with contributions from? And just so that it's really... This is just to make you aware that that is the situation. So we're going to be requesting a sign that can go up and then it can have, um, one sample when that takes over, can do a little official opening. So, and I think, you know, this is one of those things that we've done. It's taken a long while, so we all know these processes take longer than we would like them to take. Um, but we should be out there selling what we're doing. It's a fairly small... Small park, but it's a fairly well-used park. And I think, um, we should be out there saying what good work we've been doing. So, um, so it's really just for information so that, you know, we'll be getting that sign sorted and then we can do some sort of publicity around that and thank the people that have been, um, that have contributed because one or two local companies contributed to that. We have Rens on the day, obviously, the, yeah, for the AS. Okay, so it's just so that you know that we are all fine and frozen that. Um, additional flags?
Sorry, I thought we were going to discuss that a bit more.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I was giving her a measure, but if there's any questions or anything you want to say about the parks?
Shall we have an official opening while we're still...
Well, it would be nice, but...
Okay, fine.
Um, it depends how quickly we can get the... You know, you can do the sign and then you can get the flatter and the poster out, but, you know...
I was waiting for a date.
Yeah, we haven't got an official date, so... Um, so, yeah. Additional flags, do you wish you were on? Your...
I think it has proved a point. I've had so many people commenting, and it just reminds with all the battles in the flag now. Dispel any rumours that the Queen is coming? No. It's just that we have the flags and what's the point in having them in storage? Well, we could be using them. We have seven left over. Uh, so, um, miss... The people that direct the flags have said not more than eighty pounds. They might have, right? Let's give that a go, yeah? Yes, to put these seven extra flags up. We've had to buy some poles to put the flags up on, leftover flags for Millsbury, because we're having to use a smaller flag. But we had got them, so why have them just in a plastic bag and not use them? So the poles, I think I'm looking at Alison. Was that twenty pounds or thirty pounds or something like that?
I've looked it up, it's about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy together.
I think seven.
Poles and the flag.
And Jeff's.
Oh, no.
It's the total cost.
The total cost, that was.
Oh, I've looked it up to a hundred and twenty, but there we are. All right, fine. But I think, um, I've had people in Mills Street. I have been down and asked them if they want one. And I have got five flags to put down there. And two, I've got, hopefully, the big flags are going in the west end side of the town because there's nothing up that side. So I've got two flag holders on the wall at the west end just before the level crossing. So the big flags will go in there. That's approved, thank you.
Okay, anybody wish to...
Are you talking about union flags, just?
Sorry.
Are you talking about union flags?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. I have... Uh, sorry, I have an idea for next year.
That can come on later.
But if we've got them, why not use them first?
Does it need... Well, we'll do a vote anyway. Has anybody got any objection? It's a command promotion.
Oh, yes, it's great.
We've got it. So, um, is there any... Anybody got any comments or concerns about that process?
I propose to approve.
So we'll have a proposal.
I'll second that.
Second it. All those in favour?
I'll abstain.
Are you abstaining?
Can I just... Can I just have then, uh, I'll give the assistant club the list tomorrow by email.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Um, I believe you always... This is also something that you've raised, Joyce. About... I believe this is one that you've raised as well about replacing that damaged bench at the corner of Coldoberton and Barleythorpe Road.
Yes, it is damaged, it really does need replacing. Uh, we've already agreed to replace the one at the end of Long Row. So while we're replacing, we're able to replace them as well. Replace both of them. Uh, and it won't be the Lionhead ones. It'll be the cheaper versions to go in with Long Row. There's already one, um, at the, um, burial ground on Long Row, and it will match that one.
Can I just if it... If there's any option for, um, renovation or on that?
Yes, pretty nicely. I wouldn't have thought so, quite frankly. And while we're doing the job, we may just as well do it and have it hanging around and then having to get them... And there is a lifetime, it has been asked Alison about, when you put an order in, how long it takes to get it through.
The other two are on order at the moment. The other two, one checking it. One on outside, I don't see anything.
And the Lionhead one. They can be on order for ages, I think.
And does the eight hundred pounds include installation?
I don't... Um, I believe it does, yeah, but I have the cheap one.
Right, okay.
So we're talking a hundred and... Thousand six hundred.
Yes.
Not at the moment, we're just talking about...
Oh, sorry, we're talking on the eight hundred pounds. Yes, because we've already agreed the other one.
Okay. So any... Anybody have any thoughts or comments regarding the bench replacement?
Um, I'm writing thinking. George, you could probably answer this. Um, I... I was informed that the bench at the end of Coldoberton Road, um, a vehicle drove into it and damaged it, is that right?
This is what we're talking about, but it's not on the quarter, is it?
If that is the case, what particulars of the vehicle did we get? Because there's an insurance claim.
No, no, ah, no, it's just... Sorry, it's just clicked in what you're talking about. It's on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
And the, uh... The van that I thought had run into that one actually hadn't. Sorry, no, and it's just ordinary what you're...
You can understand where I was going.
I fancy where you're coming from. I think you'd be very well pressed to run into that.
What's with that?
You'd have to go past a couple of trees or something to get it there. Very reasonable question.
Just a comment. Are the oak, the benches, are they oak?
No idea.
Well, I mean, they need to be oak because even teak and things like that, they just rot.
They need to be hardwoods.
Yeah, it has to be oak, you know. Something is hard to talk.
Madam Chair, let's get on with it. It is a matching one in Long Row, which has been there now for four, five years. Here we have. Final comment.
Yeah, I... I just have to continue to get some ease about us making decisions about expenditure now. Um, because I'm... I'm not sure whether it is appropriate in April to make decisions which impact upon the financial year that's ended at the end of March. And I... I don't think it's wise to make decisions which impact upon what is largely the business of the next council. And whilst, you know, these things are worthy and I'd like to see them go through, I really can't see why they shouldn't be delayed, uh, for another month. So we're pretty sure about it.
It's called per...
Well, that's, um...
If it's helpful, it's called per.
Thank you. I think that's a reasonable comment. Um, I don't think it's about, um, refusal, it's about consideration for the next council. Um, I think that's probably a very good point, actually, too. Um, making that decision. Anybody else wish to make comment on that? So, I... I mean, I... I support you in voting, Rob, in that. So I would actually propose a decision on this to be reported in May, in the next council. But Joyce wishes to say something.
So, Madam Chair, are you saying that if I'd have brought this up a month ago, it would still have been deferred until the new council? What is a few weeks, really?
Well, because... Because we are in that very difficult last month, aren't we? Where, you know, we're making, you know, a month, two months ago, we were making decisions that directly affected this council. Whereas now we're... It is a very sort of transition type period, really. And I know, you know, you know, other councils are not making decisions, basically, financial decisions.
So why have we got meetings, not?
Should it be council?
Well, you can have... There are all sorts of...
Yeah, there are lots of things on this, on this, um, agenda that are worthy of discussion. And, you know, to say that we shouldn't be having a meeting just for... You know, the whole point is debating it, isn't it? And deciding whether it's appropriate or not. Rob's come up with a reasonable, um, consideration on that. And I personally think it's correct. But obviously, it's subject to everybody else on the table. And if I... I'm quite happy to put that proposal forward that it's deferred until the full council in May. Uh, if anybody's prepared to second that, that would be fine. Otherwise, we need another proposal on the table.
Do you want to second?
Open to you all.
Is that a proposal?
That was my proposal, that it should be deferred until May. I think you've got a good point, but...
If I could just suggest a minor amendment to it. If we say that we, you know, we support and agree with this in principle, but believe that a decision might should be deferred until May.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, yeah. So the proposal is that we support in principle the decision, but the decision should be deferred until the full council in May? Yeah, okay, which is my... Fundamentally is my proposal, a bit of Rob's opinion.
A bit of the full council, running in person.
Well, they can decide later colour. Um, seconded by Rob, One House, yeah? All those in favour of that decision? So, four. Against?
Absolutely.
One, two...
Three against? Oh, thank you very much. Okay, to item thirteen, which is the disorderly conduct, um... Policy. Okay. Um, I'm sure you've all had a couple of times to read in with digest. Um, Alex, do you wish to say anything?
Yes.
Okay, but before you, the disorderly conduct policy, which obviously you have the opportunities to digest, as the Chair has just said. I don't want to go any further. All I do is recognize your proposal.
I think it is worth not just being written and presented to you. I'm sure you're all aware that it's been thought about and considered. It has been written by a solicitor who is an expert in this field. Um, and as I perhaps mentioned to you previously, that it was... The idea was that it reflects policies held by Rutland County councils and that we're all sitting from the same soli she in the event of any disruption. Um, and it's about any disruption that can come from anywhere. Members of the public, councillors, you know, whatever. Um, and we don't currently have a substantial policy that produces ergardance around that. Our consultation, um, was again to follow, follow other areas of, in terms of consultation, as we needed to make sure that it was, was appropriately and correctly worded. That's one of the details. Okay. Comments, concerns, questions?
If it's going to be proposed, um, I'm there to second it.
Is it worth just mentioning at this point about the... Just so that obviously a member of the public did ask in relation to the, um... Risk assessment. Um, security purchase. There isn't a... There isn't a, um... This is a policy that will be in our system and available to be activated should people require to do that. Um, at this point in time, there is no arrangement to have regular... There is nothing set up, um, as in terms of costs for that. I mean, obviously, we do need to get information about that. We need to be absolutely sure, uh, around the costing of pensions. But there is nothing in the system yet. Any comments? Anybody wish to propose it?
It's going to be proposed.
Okay, so... Anybody wish to second?
I'll second.
So, second? Okay. And all those in favour? Thank you very much. Sorry. Rob's abstaining. Okay, so that brings us to, uh, schedule of payments. Um, as ever again, has everybody had a chance to read, consider and give any thoughts to any of the, um... Figures on here? Any questions? Any wish to make? Any clarification?
I think I'll just... Just... Can you handle the security stuff?
Um, no.
Okay.
Okay, no.
Okay. I propose accept.
Okay, propose accept. Turn to seconded, finally? Yeah? And all those in favour? Okay, that's important. Thank you very much. And that, of course, is followed by the statement to the council. Um... Again, some question? Any concerns, questions, Rob?
All is okay. All is okay. I mean, you're part of members of the public. Um, the term flex budget doesn't mean it's flexible in that you can do what you want with it. What it means is that you have the budget for the year and then you pre-determine how much you're going to spend month by month. And so you can judge it in any month as to how you're performing up to that month compared to how you have actually performed at that moment. So, you know, the flex may be, you know, giving you the wrong impression about it. For this particular set of accounts, the flex budget is precisely the same as the other one because it's the end of the year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to have that, uh, very kind of you. Okay, so can we have a...
Proposal.
Propose a proposal and, um, second advice? Stand, all those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, so that's the main agenda items. Because we now have some funding applications. The first of which is for Brookhill Academy, who are wishing to have a new extension to the existing school and new sliding doors to one of the existing school and new sliding doors to one of the existing... and source it towards to one of the existing school and new sliding doors to one of the existing classrooms. To one of the existing schools. Two new sliding doors, I think fundamentally that means. The proposed extension comprises of two classrooms.
Yeah.
Oh, that's wrong. Together with two intervention rooms, a music room, a toilet and a cloakroom. The proposed building will be linked to the existing school uh, by a corridor and will be positioned at the playground area, not visible from the main road. The proposed extension will be a single-storey building of a similar height to the existing school buildings. So, is there any particular concerns, obviously, regarding this?
No, obviously, I have looked at it, it's, it's, um, there's, it's nothing, I don't see a problem with it. Is it prefabricated or is it, uh...
Is it prefabricated?
Or is it made up to?
Some of them come prefabricated. You bring them on a tour, a permanent place. Doesn't matter. Or is this a permanent structure?
It's a bit, I would think, a permanent structure. Whether it's prefabricated or not, I don't know, especially if it's that hard to... But I don't know whether that impacts on our choice. Because they're looking at impact rather than, um... They've got a fair bit of ground actually around Brookhill School, haven't they?
Yeah.
And I suppose, you know, it's a very popular, very, um, well-thought-of school, so they're having to extend their, to cater for the numbers.
I think there was a letter from a member of the public, uh, stating that they're well on this and were pleased to see the school doing so well.
Right, okay. So, does anyone, does anybody want to see any other pictures?
Okay.
Do you have one? I mean...
Just in cash, right?
Yeah, no, it's fine. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't affect the, the playing area, doesn't it? Can I have a proposal now? Stand, propose this, give me a second. All those in favour? Okay, actually, yeah, thank you.
I actually have, um...
Oh, thank you, pardon, I thought you went like that, one extension from Joyce, big problem.
I don't, I haven't seen it, I don't, sorry, I'm just...
Okay. So, that brings us to our second item, which is CBS Products Limited on Pillings Road. Um, following a fire which destroyed the single-storey portion of the factory, uh, part of a rebuild needs to, part of the rebuild is to increase its size. Um, and that will be covered under their new construction. This is the, um, um... How much bigger is it? Again, again, any particular...
No, no concern at all. I'm looking at all the local plans.
Anybody? Any comments, any wishes to raise regarding this?
Yes, sure.
Have a proposal then?
I'll go first.
Propose, second advice, stand, all those in favour? One extension. Most, very much. And then, okay, so our next one, this is a little bit long, Rob, really. This is, um, Mr. Fillingham. Uh, now, this is, uh, it's a, it's a, really, it's a retrospective, um... It's already built, so it's a bit, it's always a bit difficult. I mean, this, uh, extension did originally come to us and was refused twice, maybe, um, back in June. So, but it is now, and orig, what they've done is there's been a problem with the construction. They were originally to retain some of the building. Um, and now, but during the actual deconstruction, if you like, uh, they realised they couldn't take the whole thing down and rebuild it for some structural reasons. Um, but they are rebuilding it with the existing bricks, so it will be, um, matching the surrounding area. Um, but it's, well, how people feel about that...
Yeah, I think it's worth asking the members to read the highways report.
Which is?
It's up there somewhere.
Highways report, is it long? I'll look it up and read it.
How's highways?
Which bridge do you want us to read? Off-street parking is likely to cause unacceptable condition. Is that likely to change from that? From there? It's got off-street parking, isn't it, that house?
Yeah, well, it shows concern, but, I mean, it's built, so I'm not going to put it down.
No, no.
I think it was just...
I mean, I would, I'm, as in all these cases, I think we should, um, comment that we're disappointed that this has come to us as a retrospective, um, report for discussion or plan for discussion. Um, there's probably nothing we can do about it in terms of, uh, yeah. As we've refused it twice, I think it would have been only reasonable to expect them to come back to us if there were further planning applications.
And I think we need to...
And I think we need to raise that issue, irrelevant whether we've been able to accept this or not. Yes, I think we can do that. So, can, so my proposal is that...
We could say something like, sorry, something like, we thank you for sending the retrospective planning application back to us. Uh, but having refused, having refused it twice already, um, we would, we would not wish to comment any further.
Okay.
I would still stand by refusing.
Okay, is that your proposal?
I think they've already agreed. It's quite simple.
Yes. Okay, so all those in favour? I think it's considered retrospective, sorry. Abstained, extensions, did you abstain?
I abstained because I abstained on the original one.
Okay. Okay, so, next we have Mr. and Mrs. Ford from Aysby House, the Dell. Uh, removal of a front-linked double garage and rebuild new single-story double integral garage. New entrance and stairwell. New two-story side extension to provide extended ground and first-floor accommodation. Single-story rear extension with first-floor bedroom. How could it be single-story with first-floor bedroom? Does that make, have I missed something there? Am I...
No.
Single-story to the rear with a first, with part-first-floor bedroom extension. Oh, I see, so it goes half, not over the full extension.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, incorporating new utility WC bathroom on street conversion, um, on the first floor, together with various internal alterations.
Can I make a comment on this, Chair? I've actually been able to look at site, I've hit the road. And if members know it, I'm sure most of you do. Um, all the properties are hidden behind a lot of trees. This property isn't. Having said that, um, if you read the report from, uh, the ecological department, um, they, they feel that there could be bats in that area. Um, before any, any planning approval is given, that there was a bat survey. And it's, there's the report, it's actually been sent in, obviously. Um, that, that to defer any judgement on it and only do so after the bat survey.
Right, okay.
Because bats are in that area.
Right, okay.
And they're a protected species and that's the recommendation of that, that department.
So, do you wish to make a proposal when they...
Well, that, well, that would be my proposal, we could only go by the guidelines there. Um, you know, bats are protected species and, and, um, we, if you like, we could, we could say we would propose acceptance or whichever, um, providing the bat survey...
Subject to that survey, okay. So, and do you wish to say?
There's this extension which, uh, they're applying for, is it rather large considering the size of that?
It is. It is, it is quite large, there's a lot of them on the back, but it can go up, right up, right up against the border.
And has there been no opposition from them?
Yes. Well, not, yes, there was two, two other people. Yeah, they're, they're more interested in the actual materials. They're wondering what colour it's going to be because it's not been specified.
Rather than building a scaring...
Sounds like the strong information you still don't have.
And, and quite honestly, um, extensions that go up against, uh, the, the borders, I, I question whether the, the council, um, taking heed of that. We've only got to look at that bill in your road, um, and with which we refused and it got approved by the council. And we do know it as well, that the bill go right up against the border. So, for a time to our question, is there any need for us to comment? Because it is discussable at the moment. So, that, that would be my proposal over this, that we, we either accept or, or refuse, um, and, and provide it as a bat survey.
Anybody else wish to? Well, we can't say accept or refuse, we've got to decide what we give them. What's the general, uh...
We haven't decided whether to accept it or refuse it. So, if we accept it, then we, then we...
You'd accept us to, or refusal included?
Yes.
What's people's general thought?
I think people, uh, sort of, a couple of us ought to go round and round.
So, excuse me, Chairman, we are supposed to stand when we're refreshing the chair?
Not the opening application.
Okay, yeah, you put your points, notice...
We're making it a discussion.
Do we want to... Are we, are we any grounds for refusal of this from a planning point of view?
I don't think so.
I'll be, as Chair of the planning committee, I'll be led by your...
I don't think we have.
Right, okay. So, in that, in that case, does anybody have any other comments they wish to give? Okay, so that's the proposal. Can I have a second, and that, I'll propose that, so can we have a second, dear? Thank you. All those in favour? Five in favour, two abstentions? Thank you very much. Okay, and we finally got two trees. One is for a Mrs. Roberts for one contorted willow tree on forty-four North Gate. Over to you, Joyce, as our tree person.
Well, I understand, definitely.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Because I am respecting the chair. And that's what it's all about. Um, it is, uh, a tree, a very nice tree in the wrong place. Uh, it has damaged the walls. It is a beautiful tree. It will not be any detriment to the street scene, so I would suggest that we approve the felling of this very, very large tree. And you can only see it when you stop and actually look at it up, up the driveway, really. Sorry.
Okay, so is that a proposal for me to... Everybody, any comments? Or second notes by, for all those in favour? Okay, and abstention? One abstention. And our final item now is removal of one weeping willow on twenty-two A, at twenty-two A South Street. Again, Joyce?
Thank you, another tree, a big tree in the wrong place. It's a weeping willow, it's a very nice tree. It is on the street scene. It is interfering with the telegraph poles and I would recommend that it comes, it is felled. However, I just want to comment on something. Want to confirm it? Do you want to think of just... No, oh, thank, no, thank you. It can, uh, as far as I'm concerned, it can be felled. But while I'm on the subject and standing up, the previous one, uh, in the contorted willow, I just want to make a comment on this because the... I'm sorry, just go on about this one, the previous tree.
Okay, I'm not sure, can we just hang on a minute then? If you're going to go back, can we just have a, a vote on the last one and then?
Thank you, John.
And then we'll let you have comments, so then at least we're... So, that was proposed to, for this willow, for weeping willow, is that, there is a proposal that we can...
Zep through.
Yeah.
Fell it. Seconded, what, John? Can I, all those in favour? Okay, and one abstention.
Sorry, okay, sorry.
So, Joyce, I would let you have just one last comment, it's important to you.
Yes, the previous tree, it rather worries me. Tree, the, the phone that are going to fail this, it doesn't alter the fact, this is just a comment to put out, that, that, uh, letter was dated the twelfth of March. Three weeks later, twenty, twenty-third of April, it landed at RCC. And then we got it later than that. So, this application has been in the pipeline for about a month. What worries me is, I understand the council needs six weeks' notice in writing, section two-one-one notification. If you wish to carry out tree work within a conservation area, if no correspondence from Rutland County Council is received before late April, we will assume that the tree, tree work is approved. It's not, it's almost a threat, you know? And it's taken us to get to me, or a month already. It's not hard.
Yeah, I, I agree, that's a, it's a reasonable comment because otherwise, you know...
But I just don't like the way it was worded, that, you know, it's a bit of a threat if we don't... It's like saying Whitwell to the Mayor of Paris. If you don't reply to it, we'll assume we are, we are, we are swindled with Paris. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, well, after all the meetings have closed now, it is eight, or what is it, about eight minutes past eight? And, yeah, thank you very much.